Okay.
There's a box up here for written protests if anyone would like to add to it. Amanda, she's ready.
Yeah, is she ready though? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of Angels Camp City Council, August 8th, 2019. If you could please stand for your pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Roll call.
Mayor Folendorf.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olivera.
Present.
Councilmember Herman.
Here.
Councilmember Matilde.
Here.
Councilmember Brolio is not here at this time. We have a quorum.
Next is approval of the agenda. Is there any council member that wishes to amend the agenda? No, any public comment? Okay, so move it to a motion to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
Is that the agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, move approval of the agenda. I'll second.
First by Linda, second by all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for zero one. Next is public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. The law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed. Is there any public comment not on the agenda? Nope, okay. Onto item four, special meeting agenda. So what we're all here for is a public hearing regarding Part 218 for the fiscal years 2019, 2020 to 2023, 2024 to consider an adoption of Resolution Number 1928 of the City Council of City of Angels, accepting and closing the Part 218 public notification and protest as it relates to the proposed water rate increase with receipt of less than a majority protest.
Thank you. I would like to turn it over to Michael DeGroot with Bartle Wells. He's going to do the first.
You want me to go over there?
Oh, sure, sorry. When you looked at me, I thought that was my cue. Sorry.
So before we get started with the presentation, sorry, we're going to go over a couple rules for tonight on this part of this section. So all protests on the rate increase must be submitted in writing and they will be collected at the close of the public hearing tonight. So if you are protesting, you need to put it in writing and where the drop is right here in this box, right here. Okay, does that make sense to everybody? Okay. What?
So you understand there'll be no public comment on?
There'll be public comment, but your comment, if it's a protest, must be in writing in that box or it will not be counted as a protest.
So if you're against it, you can talk, but if you are against it, you cannot talk?
No, you can talk, but if you're against it, what you're saying against the protest, it must be in that box as well. So just because you're speaking after protesting does not mean that it will be recognized without it on a piece of paper in there.
Can, can you go to the podium to speak?
Amanda, what he is asking is, was this information that our protests must be in writing to put in a box tonight?
Correct.
Was that in the information that was sent out to us and if so, where?
Yes, that was information that was provided in the notice.
Could you show me where because I have it all?
It's identified in the last page of the notice. Thank you.
Okay. So then the next step, so now that we've got that cleared up, any more questions? Okay, we're going to go through a series of presentations and then we will come after staff presentation, we will then open it to the public comment section that you just, to the public hearing that you mentioned. But the first part of this meeting will be presentations by various staff members. Okay, so with that, I will turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Michael with Bartle Wells. He will be going over the current rate schedule, the proposed, as well as the finance tables. Followed, following Michael will be David with Drake Haglen and Associates. He will be reviewing our capital improvement project. And then Debbie Pawnee will highlight for all of you the community outreach that's been done over the past 45 days.
Good evening, thank you Melissa. My name is Michael DeGroot.
Can you move it up a little bit?
Oh, is this better?
Very close to your mouth.
Oh, hello, testing? Okay, good. All right, so I'd like to go over the current and proposed rates from our rate study. And on this first table here, it'll show you the current rates. And your rates are made up of three components. You've got a meter charge, which is a fixed charge per month based on meter size. And the typical single-family residential meter size is that 5'8" meter. And that's the overwhelming majority of your customers. So that's currently $39.75. And that charge is increased based on the size of the meter. In addition, you've got a UWPA fee and that's to pay for your water supply from Utica Water and Power Authority. And currently, that's $1 a month per account. And finally, you've got a volumetric rate. And currently, your rate has three tiers. The first tier is 0 to 10, 100 cubic foot. And 100 cubic foot is about 748 gallons. And currently, there's no charge for the first 1000 cubic foot. The next 500 cubic foot are charged $1.08 and anything above that are charged $1.63. So we analyzed your rates and we restructured them a little bit based on industry standards. So we're going towards a basis for your meter charge based on the metered capacity from American Waterworks Association. And this is kind of the industry standard. And what that means is that the 5'8" meter would go down to about $34.50 while the larger meters would see an increase. For example, the 2-inch meter would go from $120 a month approximately to $275.96. So this kind of reshuffled some of the costs. And in addition, we're proposing basing your UWPA fee also on the meter ratio. So that way, customers that place a larger burden on the system would pay their proportionate share. So the fee would go from $1 to $12.61 for the 5'8" meter in the first year and then increase based on their metered capacity. So our proposed rates would go from $39.75 for the meter charge up to $46.93 after five years. The UWAP, UWPA fee would go from $1 per account to $13.91 for the 5'8" meter. And we're recommending eliminating the volumetric tiered rates and going to a uniform rate for all usage. And that would go from $1.24 in the first year to $1.69. Now, the reason we're proposing eliminating the tier structure is for legal reasons. There is a 2015 lawsuit which determined that tiers must be cost justified, so you can't just give away free water. And based on your costs, we determined that this was the most equitable structure. And just keep in mind that your rates haven't increased from current levels in about a decade for both water and wastewater. So here on the next slide, I'm showing the combined water rates and UWPA fee. And you can see that when you add the UWAP to the meter charge, it'll be going from $40.75 a month for the 5'8" inch up to $60.84 with larger meters paying proportionately more. So here is a survey which shows where, how you compare to your neighbors. And you can see Angels Camp currently is on the very low end of our survey in the green. And with the proposed first-year increase, you'll still be on the low end. The survey average was $84.24, you can see in the yellow. Now, moving on to the wastewater rates. Your current wastewater rates are fixed for residential customers at $71.92 per month. For commercial and industrial, it's a charge per establishment of $90.95. Your other institutional is .0149 cents per gallon of winter use. And for Six Mile Village, they pay per gallon of flow of .0142. So we're recommending gradually phasing in rate increases. So the rate will go from $71.92 up to $107.95 over five years for the residential class. And commercial will go from $90.95 to $136.30. Other institutional will go from .0149 to .0208. And Six Mile Village, .0142 to .0144. So here is a survey of your wastewater rates and how they compare to the region. And your about average, the surveyed average was $73.75. And you're bumping up a little bit above average, but keep in mind that this was done in 2018, 19, so other agencies will also be seeing an increase. Now, this is how you compare to Calaveras County Water District. I think this is kind of your closest neighbor. And as you can see, Calaveras County Water District has a higher rate for the meter charge and the volumetric charge. So we're proposing going to $47.10 for the lowest meter. And their current, their current rate for this fiscal year is $57.12. And they actually use the same meter capacity ratios that we're proposing. We're proposing $1.24, their current flat rate is $1.49. And for sewer, we're proposing to go to $78.01 per month and CCWD is at $93.62. So the City of Angels Camp will still compare very favorably with Calaveras County Water District. Finally, to help offset some increase, because we understand that this may have a bit of an impact, especially on low-income residents, we are recommending a low-income discount program, which would be funded by non-rate sources of revenue, specifically late payment fees. The applicant may only be, apply for their permanent residence and must be the bill payer of record and provide a copy of their current PG&E bill showing participation in the PG&E care program or documentation verifying a household income at or below 200% of the federal poverty guidelines. Once approved by staff, that you will receive a credit as funds are available. For water customers, it would be $2.68 per monthly bill. Same for wastewater, and that is a combined discount of $5.36 per billing period. And so I'm going to now turn it over to the engineer to talk about some of the reasons for why the rates are increasing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So one of the, as was alluded to, one of the reasons that a rate increase is being proposed is, is to help fund a five-year capital improvement program for water and wastewater projects here in the, in the community. And so I'd like to, this is, as I say, one of the triggers that is part of the, is part of the overall rate increase. And I'd like to go through and talk a little bit about the rationale and the documentation and the reasons why we're recommending that these projects be included in the CIP and a schedule for these projects that's in alignment with the proposed rate schedule. So I'm, just to give you a little clue as to the items that I'd like to speak about in the next couple of minutes, I want to give you a little bit of background as to how did we get here in terms of the capital improvement program? Give you just a brief overview of the budgeting process to let you know how did we arrive at these projects? To talk a little bit about the specific projects and then to provide a brief summary of the overall capital improvement program. So the, this capital improvement program actually had it had as its genesis master plan, master plans that were repaired back in 2012 and 2013. These master plans were funded by the state and we went through a very elaborate process to identify capital improvement projects that were needed, not only to bring the program, the systems into compliance with the various regulations, but as well as to provide for future growth that was identified in the, in the general plan at that point. The wastewater master plan, the 10-year capital improvement program included 14 projects. Many of the projects involved the wastewater treatment plant, replacement rehabilitation of the sewers within the community. The total cost of those 14 projects was just a hair below $7 million. The water master plan, a comparable timeline, included 22 projects that really focused on reliability, storage, water line replacement, all of the items that had been identified over about a two-year program, a two-year period as we prepared the master plans. And the overall project cost was a little over 14 million. So between the two master plans, the capital, the recommended capital improvement program at that time, approximately six, seven years ago, had a total cost of a little over $20 million. So what, what happened in the, in the interim between 2014 and 2019? There was actually a fair number of projects that were implemented, that were initiated. Much of it on the, on the sewer side focused on sewer replacement and rehabilitation to reduce infiltration and inflow issues. And infiltration and inflow is an important consideration because the cost of treating, of treating wastewater at the plant is directly proportional to how much flow comes into the plant. If we can reduce the amount of extraneous flow that comes into the plant, we reduce the overall maintenance and operation cost. We also spent dollars on improving the spray field, which was a direct response to regulatory requirements. And on the water distribution side, replacing water lines to reduce water losses. Water that we lose is water that we don't, that we cannot bill and receive revenue for. So what's the current status in terms of our water and wastewater systems and that? Well, we're, we're kind of in the, in the spotlight from the various regulators, both on the wastewater side and on the, and on the water side. We currently have an NOV, a notice of violation, from the Regional Water Quality Control Board that relates to pipeline breaks on our recycled water system. We're in the midst, we're right at the cusp of completing a project that will resolve the notice of violation with the regional board. On the water side, we've, we have a new regulator with Division of Drinking Water. And he has taken a great interest in our, in our facility and that. And we received a very extensive report earlier this year with a number of items that he was requesting us to resolve. And as we walk through the specific projects, a number of those are related to his requests and requirements from DDW. Most importantly, in terms of the actions or the regulatory environment with the Division of Drinking Water is correcting an unpermitted discharge at the water treatment plant. And we'll talk about that in a moment. So the budgeting process, and I'm not going to bore you by going through all the different blocks and, and the different arrows and that, but suffice it to say that it began with an assessment of the various conditions of certain facilities within the system, estimating demands, developing a model so that we could actually simulate what the, how we think the system would operate, validating much of those assumptions with the city staff and historical records, developing a series of projects that meet both existing and future demands, establishing priorities. And this was an effort that was a multi, multi-meeting effort with city staff and other stakeholders. And then coming forward with our, with our budget recommendations and presenting them at previous city council meetings and getting some excellent input from stakeholders in the public as to, you know, how to best put forward a, a capital improvement program for the, for the community. So let me go through the, the recommended projects that we've identified for the capital improvement program. And as I go through these projects, they really break down or are grouped into three or organized into three major series of projects. And as I walk through the projects, this is where the, essentially, these are the highest priority projects. These are the, we're going to go from highest priority to the, a less, a high priority project. And, and we'll then walk through the timing of doing these projects. One thing to keep in mind is that literally of all of these projects, we will be seeking grants and funding from external sources to help reduce the burden ultimately on the community. But the first project that I'll, that I'll talk about very briefly is at the water treatment plant. And it involves an unpermitted discharge from the plant to a natural drainage course on the property outside of the plant. And without getting to, and I apologize, I don't want to get too technical here, but what we're dealing here with is the backwash water that comes from the filters. The filters are there at the plant to remove any of the contaminants in the, in the wastewater. At some point in the process, they need to be backwashed and that backwash water needs to be disposed of. In this case, historically, it's been disposed of off the property. As well as when the, some of the process units are cleaned on a, on a quarterly basis, any of those residues and materials are also disposed off of the property. And that is what's referred to as an unpermitted discharge. And it's something that the regulators, particularly the Division of Drinking Water, frowns on and would like us to correct. So the recommended project to correct this, this unpermitted discharge is to construct a backwash handling improvements, where we would actually recycle the backwash water and treat it again for, as, as another source of potable water. This would increase the overall efficiency of the plant and improves our solid handling practices. It eliminates the unpermitted discharge and it gets us out of the regulatory hot water. This is a project that is programmed in the CIP to begin design later this year and construction next year. The second recommended project is water system replacement program, and we call it in Phase 1, to replace undersized water lines that cross State Route 49. The problem with the undersized water lines is we have areas of low pressure during a firefighting event. And obviously, that's not something that we want to see in terms of public safety. If we don't implement this project, then we're going to continue to have operational performance issues, customer complaints, and again, non-compliance with regulatory standards in terms of required pressures under, in a firefighting event. Our third recommended project, and these fall into the first group of projects, is what we refer to as the East Trump Sewer, Vallecito's Road Sewer Phase 1 Replacement. And this is a project that again is being prompted by historical overflows in certain parts of the, in certain parts of the sewer system. A sewer system, certain elements of the sewer system that are very close in proximity to the creek, Angels Creek. And when we do have a problem, if there is an issue, overflows into the creek and creates a regulatory violation, a sewer, sewer system overflow. In many cases, the, the pipelines are hydraulically overloaded during peak wet weather flow. That's why it's important for us to be working on projects to reduce the infiltration and inflow into the system. And so this is a project that if not, if not constructed, we look, we face the risk of significant overflows during rain events, triggering potential regulatory fines. And repairs to the sewer, because of some of the access limitations, become very problematic. And this is a project, as I say, that would be programmed for design later this year with construction over in 2020, or in FY 2021 through FY 2122. You'll get, you'll see a theme here in terms of our CIP. Again, another project that we recommend is sewer replacement program, replacing approximately 1,000 feet of sewer on Main Street between Church Street and Vallecito Road. In many cases, the sewer is in very poor condition. It requires extensive maintenance to keep it operational. We have a real concern that if we do have a failure of the sewer, that we might have sinkholes occurring in the, in Main Street. And the cost of repairing those sinkholes is, is, can be very exorbitant. And again, we worry about overflows, triggering regulatory fines. So this again is a, is a project that's programmed in our initial group of projects under the CIP. We have a sewer replacement program Phase 2. And these are replacing six, six-inch sewers in Gardner Lane and Easy Street. And this is again directly related to problems that have been uncovered, failures that have been repaired and repaired and repaired again. And we want to go in ultimately and just replace these sewers that are problematic and avoid any problems with overflows and costly repairs. Then we have the, kind of the second group of projects and it'll, it'll become apparent when you look at the overall schedule. This revolves around replacing and expansion of the filter capacity at the water treatment plant. In this case, we're recommending that the three existing filters would be replaced with two larger units. And part of this project really revolves around, it's somewhat of a regulatory issue. The capacity, the permitted capacity of our water treatment plant is based on the operation of only two of the three filters. And during the summer, during peak demand periods, we, we approach the capacity of those two filters. So if we, we can actually produce more water with the three filters, but we, we are in violation of our permit at that, at that point. So the, the impetus for this project, part of it is the regulatory requirement to increase the capacity. And part of it is just to, we have filters that, out there at the plant that are in excess of 20 years old. They're difficult to maintain. Spare parts for the internal components are not available. So it's, it's, it's difficult to keep the system running. So this project not only provides additional capacity at the plant, but provide, essentially provides us with a new series, set of filters that will extend the service life of that facility for, in excess of 20 years. In the second group of projects, we also have another sewer replacement program. 1,000 feet of 6-inch sewer in Raspberry Lane and Lee Lane. And these have been areas of, of continuous issues over the years. And again, we program it to eliminate those issues and, and provide a system that is more maintenance, more, more maintenance friendly with less operational issues. We have a water system replacement program, beginning to replace some of the undersized water lines that are on Main Street. water lines that are on Main Street. Again, this is, all revolves around low pressure and the ability to fight, or the inability in some instances, to meet firefighting flow requirements, and we want to avoid those issues and provide better service, better operation to the customers along Main Street. And then the last project, and it would be kind of in the, it's at the end of the capital improvement program, is what we refer to as the water transmission main augmentation project. We have a, the transmission vein from the water treatment plant that brings treated water into the distribution system, there is only a single pipeline. That pipeline has exceeded its design service. It's over 50 years old. They have had failures of the pipeline. It's, it's difficult to maintain because it is an older pipeline and that. But the fundamental problem is that it's the only pipeline that brings water from the treatment plant into our distribution system. If there is a catastrophic or significant failure at the pipeline, we, it will be very difficult to bring water into the, into the, into the city system. The storage tank is on the other, is on the top of the hill, and there would be no pipeline to bring the water to our, to our community and that. So we're recommending that a second pipeline be constructed. This would allow us to better maintain both, both series of pipelines. If we don't construct a second pipeline, it, we have limited opportunities to maintain that existing pipeline because it's literally always in service. It will be difficult to identify possible near-term failure events and prevent interruption of supply to customers. And as I say, pipe failure would compromise our ability to deliver water to the community. We have programmed this project actually to begin looking in more detail at this project five years down, down the line. It's, it's the, the last project that we've identified in the, in the capital improvement program. And in that interim period, we would be taking a, taking a more aggressive look at identifying the condition of that pipeline to make sure that our, our program or our, the timing of adding the second pipeline is consistent with the remaining service life of the, of the existing pipeline. So those are the, those are the projects that we've identified that are part of the capital improvement program. We've listed them here in the, in the left-hand column of this, of this, of this chart. And the different colors, the, the golden rod is actually when we would be designing the project, and the, the light green is when the project construction would occur. So you can kind of see that we have a group of projects in this first 2019-2020 period. We designed the projects, we built some of them, and then we've built the remaining portion in 2020 and 2021. We have, our second group of projects starts in 2021, when we finish the, the first group. And then we have the final group of projects, the, where we start the water transmission main augmentation project, and that, we're just looking at starting design in year five of our, of our capital improvement program. Now, to give you a little bit better idea of the dollars that we're looking at expending under this capital improvement program, we just, we just grouped them together for water and wastewater, and obviously, you can kind of see that our emphasis is on water system improvements. In the past, we've spent a fair amount of money on the wastewater side, and we're trying to bring the water system up to the same, up, up at least to that same level of, of performance and that. So there's approximately, if you were to add the numbers up, on the water side, we're looking at about five, between five and a half and $6 million of improvements. On the wastewater side, between two and $2.5 million worth of improvements. So about 70% of the capital improvement program is dedicated to the water system and about 30% to the wastewater system. And that's how we've, that we've, how we've organized the, the projects based on priorities, and then looking at just how best to phase those over a, over a five-year period. That's, that's an overview of the overall capital improvement program.
Good evening, council members. My name is Debbie Pawnee. I'm with Destination Angels Camp, and we worked with, in partnership with the City of Angels Camp staff, was pleased to help in this endeavor in getting the information out, both the notification of the public hearing for this evening, as well as hosting a number of information forums for the general community. We had a number of volunteers that did the folding and stuffing, sealing of the 2029 water rate payer letters that went out, and the 1,905 wastewater rate payer notices that went out. We coordinated a number of information forums and distributed flyers via City Hall and related departments, our offices at the Angels Camp Business Association and Destination Angels Camp, the post office bulletin boards. We went door-to-door and sent emails to the area businesses. We posted on the city's website the various rate increase information, the notification of when our information forums would be held, as well as the various studies that we've heard here this evening. We did general announcements to the local media. We had announcements that went in into various community newsletters, and we posted on several social media websites. On the websites, we had over 1,000 reviews of folks reading the information and referring to our website, and we were able to track those kinds of referrals that went to the websites, and we had a variety of shares. We hosted 16 residential and/or commercial rate information forums from July 25th to August 7th, offering a variety of days and times to reach out to people, including weekends and evenings and early mornings. We had 182 people attend those various sessions. We received 26 phone calls into our office, and we had 18 walk-ins from folks who wanted to know more information about the particular rate increase and the information behind it. I know City Hall had a number of, of calls too, but we didn't track those particular calls. We hosted information tables at the farmer's market. We met with over 16 people at the market, and we distributed flyers to those in attendance at the farmer's market. We posted at the Angels Camp and Altsville Post Office bulletin boards. Oftentimes, we find notices taken down. We made sure on a daily basis the notices were there. We also had flyers on the table for folks to pick up and take with them. We met with a variety of homeowner groups in small neighborhoods by invitation only. We had small group meetings and such as Vicor Mobile Home, Mobile Home Park with the residents there, Capello Apartments and other related apartments in town, Country Lane Estates, to name a few. We made ourselves available to meet with people either on a one-to-one or small group meetings. We had a number of interests from our community. We found that most appreciated the additional outreach to help understand what this meant to them personally and paying the bill as what it meant to the community and what kind of projects were being proposed. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Now that we're done with staff reports, we will now take testimony from the public regarding the proposed water rate, and we request that each person who speaks, what? Okay. We request that each person who speaks give their name and address and state whether they are the owner of the property affected by the proposed rate increase. So at this time, we'll open for public hearing.
We're going to limit, we're going to limit the comment period to, pretty strictly, to three minutes, unless council asks a question of you, at which time I will stop the timer and restart when you begin again.
Thank you, Susan.
This is the public hearing for, any, 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 no?
Water.
Water. This is the public hearing for water rates. We will be doing a second public hearing for the sewer rates.
Will there be one for both?
There'll be.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, one at a time. So we'll do the public hearing for water, and then she'll close that, she'll open the public hearing for sewer, and then close that.
But there will not be a vote?
You'll have.
All right. Cool. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Sounds like you guys have done a lot of outreach. I did want to point out a few things.
Can I get, can I get you to state your name and address?
Oh, sure, sorry. Yep, my name is Christopher Clerk, owner of 671 Casey Street here in Angels Camp. Some of the things I found interesting today that I'll speak to quickly, the individual who first spoke went over proposed water and sewer rates, water rates, for just 2019, and did not address all the way to 2023. What that amounts to, that change, which is effectively four years, is $13. I'll speak overall, so right now, I pay $112.67 per month for water and sewer at a 5/8 meter size. Effectively, in four years, that will go up to $168.79, which is a 66% increase in four years. I feel that the rate increase is astronomical and maybe unrealistic. He did show kind of how these rates tie in with other rates around the county, and that was good to see, but once again, I didn't see anything all the way to 2023, which is pretty drastic increases for the next four years. Additionally, your low-income discount at those rates amounts to 3% discount, which I think is, you might have heard some kind of laughing in the room here. So I think that kind of speaks to, I'm not sure you would be doing enough for the low-income residents of this town, city. I think that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
You still have time?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So we're here today. I wonder what the next steps are as people are, you know, providing some testimony. What happens next? Is there, are you, is the city council going to go and, and talk on this and come up with some other proposed changes? This letter here clearly states the new rate will be reflect, reflected beginning on the September 20th bills. So that makes, leads me to believe that there will not be additional discussion past this, and that it's already essentially taking effect. It's a question.
So you want to explain the 218 hearing process?
So after the two, the public hearing, thank you, excuse me. So after the public hearing, then the council will consider everything they've heard, we will count the protest votes. If they exceed 50% plus, sorry, if they exceed 50% plus one, then the council, the rates have been, like, the protests have been successful, and so we don't move forward with adopting them. If the votes have not exceeded that threshold, then the council considers the resolutions and can vote on them, and the resolutions implement the new rate structures.
Got it. Then I would ask follow-up question, is this the only avenue for submitting protests?
They have to be written protests, and they must be submitted to this box.
Here today, now?
Correct.
So all of your outreach that you did, there was no opportunity in that to submit a formal protest? Okay.
Actually, we have been receiving protests at City Hall.
Okay.
In the mail and in person for some time.
And those will be counted towards that?
Yeah, they're in here.
My name is Lori White. My husband and I own property at 448 Live Oak Drive in Angel Oaks. First, I have to say, I was delighted to receive some information from the council that this was going on, but I don't think that you gave us enough information about this protest procedure. I, I, I believe that if I knew that this protest procedure, we had to drop something in the box tonight, I've spoken to at least six or seven of my neighbors, and none of them feel that this is a fair increase, and I might have been able to get a protest written from them and dropped it in the box tonight. But having said that, I noticed that the majority of Angels Camp is not here, and I have to wonder why we're talking about an increase in water. The reason why is that I'm sure that they feel, as I do, it doesn't really matter what we say, you're going to do what you want to do anyway. The water must be paid for. I did look at the increase in Toolumee County. I have it here, their increase for 2019. Their monthly sewer charge is currently $46, it's going to $49, that's $3 per household, that's a .06 increase. Their fixed charges for water are currently $56.50, and they are going to $60.50. That's a total of their increase to $109.50, and I'm only addressing residential now because I don't know much about business. But they're going to be increased to $109.50 per month, and I think that's considerably lower than what we're paying before our increase. As I look at the increased rates, I'm not too sure, because we didn't get all of these documents in the mail, and with all due respect to...
15 seconds. Pardon? 15 seconds.
All due respect to Destination Angels Camp, this is the first I've heard that they were involved in this at all, so I did not know to go to their. These increases amount to almost 50% or more over a five-year period of time.
Time.
I think it's ridiculous.
Joanna Montesodin at 988 Mark Twain Road. I was kind of confused at first that it was $20 million for all these changes, and then that it was for, they put five and a half to six million and two to two and a half million for, you know, between water and sewer, which totals seven and a half to eight and a half million dollars. So I'm kind of confused what the total cost is. You haven't, anybody have an answer for that, or? Well, anyways, if it's the, what you said first, the 20 million, what are the grants going to be? I'm sure the grants would be a few million dollars, and with eight and a half million dollars in the water has in reserve, I would think you wouldn't need such a large increase. It is a very, and then, Eric, the projects will be finished between 2023 and 2024. Will you reduce the rates? I mean, if, you know, are we going to keep taking that exorbitant amount of money from Angels Camp residents?
My name is Jack Lynch, 600 Selkirk Ranch Road, Angels Camp. I have some comments. I didn't realize you were going to split it out, so some of these things may pertain to the sewer, but most of what I'm going to say has to do with the water. It will run a little bit more than three minutes, and I hope that I am not cut off because there's so few people.
We're giving everybody three minutes. If we have to give them three minutes, we've got to give you three minutes.
There's so few people here tonight, I would think that the council would want to hear a full explanation of what people have prepared. And I would, I'm going to be speaking for three and one-half minutes, as I timed it, and I would hope that I could speak three and one-half minutes. Because if you cut everybody off at a precisely three minutes, you're going to have angry people in the city. You need people in support of this, feeling that they have expressed their ideas. And I hope the council goes along with that, and particularly the mayor and the other council members. Anyway, I probably used up two minutes of my time already.
I actually stopped the timer.
All right, thank you.
So you're starting now.
In 2010, City of Angels Camp had the highest water and sewer rates in all of Calaveras County. I don't know whether you know that or not. City staff at that time and the city council members decided to change this direction because we felt we were non-competitive on housing and businesses. So they started a very diligent review of each proposed project. The council brought our rates down. Not mentioned here tonight at all, in, in, in 2010, the city council voted to return the water rates to 1996 rates. That's the $39.75 you see up there. Already, at that time, it was... up there. Already, at that time, it was, it was about $5 or $6 a month higher. Okay, that just gives you an idea of what the mentality of the council was. And then, they brought those rates down, and even with the spending of $800,000 on new sewer lines, you get the general impression, listening to a lot of people in the city who'd never spent a dime on sewers. $560,000 was spent to rebuild the water treatment plant and the starting up of a $3.5 million ultraviolet wastewater treatment plant, state-of-the-art, which eliminated the use of chlorine chemicals. Also, today, listen to this now, everyone, the city has excellent reserves totaling $8.5 million in water and sewer groups. So, you have $8.5 million just sitting there. Unfortunately, the proposed capital projects and the rate increases are going to take us back there again, up, up, up. This is a negative for the city, citizens, schools, and businesses. The projects proposed are based on recommendation from outside engineers and consultant with vested interest in receiving advisory fees. Those fees are 25% of every one of these capital projects. The other false factor cited to justify the new project is the expected city growth based on the 2020 general plan. You see often references, 2020 general plan. This plan projected growth at 1.8 to 2.5% per year. Our actual growth rate in the past 10 years was only .7%. And with the county, as we know, slightly negative. I'll continue my comments, or I'll do it under the sewer.
So, with that, now, even though you're timed, what is the consensus on the council to allow it up to five minutes? With that, I'll allow everybody else that had already spoken to come back up if they want to come up, if I, if we allow him the five minutes? Is that okay? Is that concentration on?
Second.
Okay. Well, is five minutes enough for you guys to allow him to keep talking?
Sure.
Is that fine with you, Jack?
It's good.
Two more minutes, Chris.
I'll reset the timer for two minutes.
I feel it's so important because we're talking about so much money and, and, and rates, and it's, it's an emotional thing with the people. With these comments, I'm appealing to our salaried city staff and the council members to drill down into the real needs and justification for each of the projects, which totaled tonight, we saw $8 million during the next five years. I'll illustrate my concern with one of the projects, the $3.4 million capital project for two new water filters to replace the current three filters serving our needs. The consultant is telling the council that the present filters have exceeded their service lives. Given that the filters are just large steel containers, and I've looked at them, and I know what they look like and how they work, to contain a filtering media, what is the need to scrap those containers out? I don't understand that. Also, note that the consultant is referencing on his chart the 2020 general plan in justification, and he uses the word for quote-unquote "expansion in capacity." The 2020 general plan projected a population of the city of 4,350 today and 5,500 in 2029. That's 10 years from now, versus today's 2019 population of 3,840 people. So, if you use those projected, yeah, you've got to build the capacity, but we're not there. On the other side, I have no concern, whatever, about the sewer replacement projects of $900,000, which are so needed. That's, those are great ones. Please consider a council review step. Once the design details of each project, this is be a new thing, that, once you get through the design details of each project is completed, and before the bids and the construction
Time.
is actually started, please have a review by the council.
Time.
Here's a copy of my comments.
Thank you.
I should probably be controversial. I usually am.
One moment.
In the few years that I've lived here, this is the most
Hold on. I need to restart the timer. Okay?
The reset in the timer. Are you good? Okay, you can go.
Well, thanks for my listening to you or listening to that lady.
You can listen to me. You're good to go.
Okay.
But she's going to yell, "Stop."
As I understand what's going to happen, or what you would like to happen, is that you're going to increase the cost of water to homeowners in Angels Camp over a five-year period by nearly 80% per month. That's a lot of money. People, you should think about that. If it's a dollar now, it's going to be a dollar eighty in five years. And I look back at what's been going on in the few years that I've lived here. The most major one for me was, not major one, we had to fight the marijuana off because certain people wanted to use marijuana to pay their bills every month in the city. And they needed to, because I understand that there was some problem with about $40,000 of missing money two or three years ago. The board, the, the council, not individuals, it's not the point, because you represent us as a council. If you're saying there's been no increases or maintenance of any note done since 2010, you should be ashamed of yourselves. That's 10 years of mismanagement of our water and sewage system. I don't think you should have the money, and I'll tell you why. I think you've got Rolls-Royce ideas, but you're driving around in Ford Fiesta's financially. And what you want to do is you want to convince the people in this town that we can afford to borrow these millions of dollars of money because you're going to take it out of our water bills, which leads me to my final point, and then I will shut up. I don't think you can convince us that even if you've got the go-ahead to do these projects in a oneer over a five-year period, you would leak some of the money into the general fund, because I don't trust you. You're people on the council, and you're trying to make a name for yourselves. Not individually, excuse me, I'm talking about the council. You need to understand, you've taken on in the last five years, a lot of retired people on fixed incomes. I'm going to tell you, I'm one of them. This is going to hurt my pocket over five years. And I asked the question, and we should be asking the question of the engineers, because I thought he was selling a second-hand car. He kept telling us, if we don't do this, it's going to do that. If we don't do that, it's going to do something else, just like a second-hand car salesman, so, if I may say so. I don't think you should have the money. I think you should go back to the drawing board, and you should worry about what we, the public, think you should be spending the money on. I applaud the idea, but you don't have the money. You've got Rolls-Royce ideas, you've got Ford monies, and you are not considering the fact that the people of this town are not going to get any existing benefit themselves in any of the houses. We're talking about under, under roadwork, under this work, under that work. It's not coming into people's houses where people are retired. It's, they're not going to see any difference in the water. But you'll be able to say, my company made quite a bit of money doing whatever it was you did for the city to be here today. You've got to think again. This is Angels Camp. It is not 30,000-peopled city.
Mrs. White, please let me change my timer back to two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing that I will try and impress on you is this low-income discount. The people who are on low income and poverty level, or the federal poverty level, make very little money. And I can tell you, those of us who aren't Social Security make very little money. And I would say to you to consider, if you're going to increase anything, you keep those increases to the amount that is being increased in Social Security every year, or the amount that is being increased to people who may be on welfare, welfare, or other types of state aid. Because you increase these water rates this much, their money's not increasing that much as a percentage. And I think that you really need to consider the number of people that you're going to be hurting. My husband and I live on Social Security. If you increase it this much, I can't go to the federal government and say, "Look, they raised my water bill by X number of dollars. So, could you give me more than, last year, I think they gave us $10, $13, and they took $10 away because Medicare increased by that amount?" So, please consider.
Hi, I'm Jessica Johnson, at, owner at 1020 Stelty Court.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your address.
1020 Stelty Court.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have two questions. The first one is the study that the gentleman in the beginning, sorry, I can't reach it. That, was, was there any information when he compared it to our neighbors, the rates that they're paying, was there a comparison to the average income? So, like, our income here in Angels Camp compared to those other cities, if their income was the same? Because I do know, we do have a lot of retired folks. My parents are retired, so they're on a very fixed income as well. So, was that part of the study?
We could ask Michael.
Okay.
Michael, if you don't mind responding to that question? You'll have to go to the
Michael, you have to go.
I'll share.
No, our study did not look at incomes. It's just a rate study looking at the cost of service.
Is that something that the city is taking into consideration? Is our average income compared to the other folks? So, their rates, is that something that the city would take into consideration?
I believe that it was council's direction to consider the low-income discount for the community, which is based on fees that are collected from late payments, and that's in consideration of affordability. But what the council needs to consider when they set the rate is the cost of the infrastructure and owning and operating the utility. So, regardless of the number of users or the income level of the users, that cost is still established, and the burden and the responsibility of the local jurisdiction, they have to have a mechanism to pay for that.
And so
Sorry, go ahead.
So, the grants aren't going to be able to cover any of the five dollars? It just doesn't seem like it's going to matter to these folks on the low income?
City's staff will be actively and aggressively pursuing grants, but one of the things that we have to demonstrate to funding agencies is the capacity to sustain and operate our utility.
Okay. And then, my other question is, this money that, that we're collecting that we'll increase it to, is it stipulated anywhere that, that money's only going to be used to make these improvements, and it won't go anywhere else? Is that somewhere for us to see?
You are absolutely correct. These are enterprise funds. They are collected for the purposes in which the, they are intended. They are tracked completely separate from the general fund. And then, with this rate increase, the general fund services will actually be contributing to the enterprise funds for water and sewer, the city paying its own utilities for those services as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, the reset. Okay.
All right. Christopher Clerks, six, owner, property owner, 617 Casey Street. I do want to, now that I know the, and it says here, I didn't read it all the way, the majority protest, right? Meaning that in order for this public hearing to, or the citizens of Angels Camp, the property owners of Angels Camp, to be able to, I guess, win this majority protest, would mean that, I'm going to, based on the population of Angels Camp, which is, I believe, around 3,800 people, would mean that there's 1,900 letters in that box right now. I would think that there is not capacity within that box for 1,900 letters. So, I'm going
Can I, so, can I? It's actually, it's not the population size, it is
It is property owners.
Property owners only.
And that magic number of 50% is 942
Got it.
properties that receive water.
I just wanted to
Okay. Thank you. So, potentially 900 letters can fit in there. I'd love to see someone pick that thing up, and, you know, I think that would be the, the gauge right there, pass or fail. But I guess with that, I'm going to assume that there is not 51% in there. So, I guess, to the gentleman's point earlier, I'd asked, maybe there could be an additional review by the city council based on some of the numbers that he had, some of the past practices, and what exactly this will mean to city residents. I think he made a good point that we do want to attract people who want to live here. I want to live here in Angels Camp. I chose to live here. I grew up here. But with that 66% increase over four years, it's, it's, that's going to be tough. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
There any other, is there any other comments before I close the public hearing, just on water? Because we have to
Can we legal address?
I'm going to let legal explain that. There's legality involved in that one.
So, Proposition 218 uses this process with the protest ballots being submitted this way. The ballot is more for taxes or other types of fees and things that the city uses. That's the difference. That's why you, that's why this was done this way and not on the ballot. It's taxes versus fees.
So, when you do a tax increase, that goes on the ballot, any fees go through the Prop 218 process, which is state, state law? Okay. Okay. Well, if there's no one else that wishes to comment on the water, I'm going to close the water public hearing and then go into the sewer public hearing. Okay? Water closed, and now I will open the sewer, the sewer testimony for public hearing.
Gary Hinman, property owner, right next to the high school here.
We've closed the public hearing.
Huh?
She just opened it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, you're good.
You're fine. You're fine. Sorry.
I think you're fine, Gary.
Go for it. And we'll do the five minutes. And we'll do the five minutes as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Shouldn't take me that long. Number one, I have to comment on Jack. I was in charge of the sewer system here a long time ago. And history has repeated itself. You were in the same place that I was, and the city was about 40 years ago, 30 to 40 years ago. Going through the same thing. Because you haven't addressed it incrementally as you've gone along. Not taking side swipes, that isn't it. There's other things, and there's reasons for it, and we don't need to get into that. But I will turn around and look at the report that was issued, that the engineer issued. And I take some reservations with it. And I would advise the council to get another engineer's report on it, or advice that has no financial interest in it at all. Okay? The reason for that is that when I was on, we had things done, the spray waste facility and all, and different things in the pipeline to it. And because the way the engineer had turned around and designed it, we had nothing but problems. Except, we had some really good people that spotted the city some money. Basically, loaned them money for between six months and a year. Private enterprise, private citizens that sat on the planning commission and turned around and were just citizens that did that. The city had no money to pay them, to pay contractors, when we had sewage running down the streets. Okay? We do need to take care of those things. We do need to have the monies for it. And I disagree with the portion on that says of rate-making proposals. I think that's arbitrary and that sort of things. And the amount that you have in there, if people would look at it, I forget what line it is. But I think it showed like there was 7,000 for professional services this year, goes to 150 or more the next year. Okay? I would advise the council to take a look at this. This is the first public meeting with the council in attendance to take reviews from people of the community before you have this rate proposal go through. I was also involved in another one up in Bear Valley. So, I have had some experience with this. And that would be my advice to the council. The other thing, just because of my business property, I wonder why the city of Angels turns around and gives a rate to a residential area that has a residential rate of one, but a commercial rate, which was, I'm going to say it's 70-some dollars, and the commercial rate is 90. And why there is that differential? When you don't have... It's supposed to be based on the amount or the certain class of use that you have. Okay? There are lots, and I actually calculated, and I won't get into it, of my own commercials that I have here. And they are much less than any of your residential people would have, because they're offices. Maybe you need to make another section of commercial, you know, that are for ones that have a toilet and a sink. You know, that basically are office. So, that shouldn't... It's supposed to be equated to what you use or what your weight is on the system. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing that there is no one else heading to the podium, I will now close the public hearing for us. Oh, you...
Patsy Gonzalez, 1600 Depot Road. I had a chance to review this rate cost of service study. And I only ended up with a lot of questions and not really being able necessarily to support this. I'm trying to... I was hoping that the council would speak up about the water and then allow us to talk about wastewater, and then have you speak again about that. So that, since you had separated those two issues, it would have been nice to have heard that input from the council. I've been really stumbling over some of these costs. I'm seeing that salaries and wages, including professional services and benefits, et cetera, end up being, and I'm on page 30, 1,157,349. And the total operating costs are 1,944,231. So, that means that professional services and salaries and wages are taking up about two-thirds of the project. At least, that's what it just looks like to me. And I'm trying to figure out who's being paid with these salaries and wages. I mean, how many people do we have working at the wastewater treatment plant and at the water treatment plant? Are they making over $100,000? You know, are there six of them? I'm trying to figure out where all these salaries and wages come from in these operating costs. And I just find that those costs are just exorbitant, because I really think that we need these projects. I had worked for Condor Earth Technologies. It's a geoscience company, and I've done wastewater treatment reports and, you know, well-drilling things and stuff like that. So, reviewing this, I just... I was really stumbling over the salaries and wages and was hoping somebody could straighten me out on it and maybe justify these exorbitant costs as compared to the projects themselves. Thank you.
Lori White in Angels Oaks. I also just have a question, because I noticed those salaries as well. And I'm concerned, has the council got more than one bid, if you will, on this project?
Sorry, what was the question? Can you repeat the question, please?
Have we... Has the city gotten more than one bid on this project? I mean, do we have three projects to look at so that the council could...
All of the projects are in the beginning phases. They will go out for competitive bid.
Okay.
And... Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing for sure. And then, at this time, we do the count? Okay. So, at this time, we'll take a recess. And Doc will go through and start counting. And then, once they have finished counting, we will come back and reconvene. Anything else you guys would like to add?
I'm sorry?
Anything else you guys would like to add to this?
No. Did you want to... Did you want staff to provide a response on the salaries and wages to the previous?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I believe currently, the water and wastewater operates with six or seven?
Six.
Six, full-time. Is it fully staffed at seven?
Yes. It's operating now with six full-time employees, fully staffed at seven. They are all certified employees with various degrees and certification. We operate the water and the wastewater treatment plants seven days a week. They work varying shifts and are always also on call should there be emergencies out at the water and sewer treatment plant.
Okay. Were there any other questions that you guys remember?
No.
Thank you. Okay. So, we just wait for you guys to come back?
Okay. Do you want to go count those, Susan?
So, if there's any other protest that you want to drop in the box, please do it now?
I know I got cold. I felt so good when I first walked in. Now, I've been sitting here cold. I'm glad you said something. Yeah, I'm glad you said something. I'm freezing. It is cold. I was thinking, oh, God. I'm glad I wore a coat. Yeah, I was thinking that, too. It's freezing. I don't know why it's so cold. Oh, you know what? The temperature... Oh, yeah, there it is back there.
I know.
I think it's because things have been hot, and now it's down to nine. You know what I mean? It's probably set for... No, it's just cold in here.
It's cold.
You know what? In just the last couple of minutes, I started to feel that.
Like my fingertips, they kind of tucked them in.
Everybody doesn't remember.
Right on this, I don't know.
I don't know if it's controllable for... It must be controllable, just for this room.
Sure is, yeah.
Sure is, yeah.
We've had two city council...
At the same round, for months, for months.
I am sorry to spoil your evening.
So, yeah, we're close.
But I'm going to speak regardless, so please don't tell me to sit down. I protest vigorously that the city attorney and a city employee have just counted over in the corner so that nobody else can hear what's going, see what's going on. Whatever votes there were, there were no votes sent out in the packages, so nobody had a chance to vote from the packages you sent out. And I'm telling you, I will protest the vote and I will make sure it's done up through the county. And I will make sure it's done up whatever organization. You cannot stand over there, the two of you paid by the city, and count votes when you two technically could be accused of being in favor of the vote. This is appalling. Mayor, you should do something about it now.
Okay, so, we're going to reconvene. And I will turn it over to city staff to report.
Madam Mayor, we have counted the protests and we were requiring a majority, which would have been 942 for water and 847, I'm sorry, 848 for sewer. And we received 41 protests.
And that includes the ones that were mailed in as well?
Yes, it did.
So, at this time, we bring it back to coun, we bring it back to council?
So, council can move forward with consideration of the resolutions as agendized.
Do we need to entertain them separately or together? Do we need to vote them separately or together?
Separately.
Separately? Okay. So, for the first one, for the water, resolution number 1928. Is there a motion by this council to approve the...
Is there an opportunity for council comment on any of this?
Yes.
You want to open it up to the council?
Can we, can we do that?
Yes. The council may move forward with consideration of the item as, as you typically do with any item. So, I would expect council comments and discussion.
Okay. And council, if you have comment, you can...
You got anything?
Yeah, I'll make a comment really quickly. This water and sewer rate increase is not the greatest thing in the world. I'm, I'm paycheck to paycheck for the most part, too. But there needs to be some improvements made to the city water and city sewer. If we can get grants and if we can do things, those are all ifs, and there hasn't been a rate increase in quite a few years. I feel everybody's pain and it's horrible to do increases, but I think it's needed at this time, so.
Comments for me just related to the process. I've been on the council about two years. Can you hear me? Yeah. So, personally, my hat's off to Debbie and team for taking on the communications plan. Disappointed a little bit here tonight to hear people felt they didn't hear anything. That, to me, is a big surprise. I know the effort that went into the communications plan, the letter that went out, the notice of the process, all of that, I think was done well and done thoroughly. And I'm supportive of that effort and I appreciate it, Debbie. I think everybody, if they didn't recognize it, did have an opportunity on multiple occasions to speak to this in an open forum at council meetings. And attendance was sporadic. I know, I saw Jack at a couple, I saw Berta at a couple. But I didn't, I didn't see, you know, any, any major things or, you know, large groups of people there. With respect to the process, I'm convinced we followed it legally with respect to the vote and with respect to how this proceeded and, and what opportunities were presented to people to speak in opposition to it. And, you know, I'm convinced that we've done the right thing with this and there has been ample opportunity for people to speak to it. And then, in terms of the projects themselves, I think we're not going to, I'm not in favor of kicking the can down the road anymore. There have been projects identified in previous studies that were identified as pie in the sky. This, I think, is restrained, is brought down to what's doable in five years. And as painful as it is for some, I think it's, it's appropriate. I see individual challenges to individual pieces of the project and things like that, and I recede for that and understand your concern. But I feel we've done a reasonable job in communicating this and getting the projects pared down to things that are manageable in a five-year plan. I'd have not been in favor of, personally, of anything that was greater than five years because it's, it's uncontrollable. So, I'm satisfied that we've done what we needed to do both morally and legally, so that's all I have.
Any other comment?
Yes, you know, I know it's difficult because we all have budgets and there's tightness. And even when you look at the $5.30 something, I think, for low income, but then I remember when I was very low income and finding 10 bucks, I thought, wow, you know. And so, I know that even that $5.00 can help those who are very, very low income, even though it's not a lot itself. It's still at least some help. I wish we could do more, actually. And hopefully, if we do have grants or things of that sort that can alleviate any of the difficulties, we certainly will work to do that. And I feel too, I was reading it over again today, and this is my, how many it's time that I've read over this report, looking to see and make sure that we weren't putting too much of a burden on, you know, on anyone. And, and I just feel that, you know, we've done this, we've been working on it since January, we've had study sessions. I feel actually very good as a council member because I'm more familiarized with this and understand it, which I wouldn't have understood it if we hadn't spent so much time on it. I really wouldn't have. And I feel good about that. So, I know it is difficult and, and hopefully, all of our budgets will increase so that this will not be a burden.
I'd like to say, it has been, we have been working hard on this. We've been looking into it, we've been asking questions. We all live here. We get to pay these rates also, adjusting budgets. Everybody lives on a budget. I mean, so, in this, I think that we had to look at the big picture. We had to look at what the city needs are, not just our individual homes. And I think we've identified that and prioritized properly for today and hopefully for tomorrow and, and the years ahead. So, we didn't make, you know, we didn't come into this lightly. We came into this knowing this is a big, big project, a big deal. So, please know that we hear your concerns and we considered everything. And I, I feel that we really have done our work, our due diligence.
I think they had a quote in the paper a couple months ago, and it was the reality of if this council didn't do the work that we've been doing since January, what the future of the city's services will look like. And it was, what would you, what do you, what does the, does the citizens want? Do they want us to continue to provide these services? And I'm thinking, everybody wants to have water come out of their pocket. And this was not easy, even between all of us up here. There was back and forth as well. And we worked through it and if, if we don't do this, then the city must, we won't be giving you those services at the end of the day. And I commend the engineers and everybody that has put this together and really broke this down because it really put us, put in perspective of what is really under those grounds. I mean, you guys have seen the pictures of the pipe. Capacity isn't always what, where it ends up, it's how it's going to get from your home to the end. And so, when we're talking about capacity, it's the overall system here. And I just really congratulate staff, too, on hard work and a lot of envelope stuffing for everybody, getting information out. And so, thank you, everybody, for doing the hard work. With that, I'll bring it back to council. I asked for a motion on the resolution, which was 19-28, for the water. Is there an entertainment for that?
I move approval of resolution number 19-28, the water rates.
I'll second.
Can we do roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will start to my left with Councilmember Matoli.
Aye.
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 Okay. Bye, Bill. Next on the resolution is 19-29, which is the sewer rate proposal. Are there any council comments on that that had not already been said? With that, I entertain a motion for resolution number 19-29. Moved by Alvin.
Second.
Second by Joe. And we'll do another roll call vote. And we'll start with, to my left with Councilmember Matoli, and we'll go down.
Aye.
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 Bye, Bill. So, with that, I turn it over to staff on what the direction is next.
That's, that is all we had for this item, so at this point, I would recommend adjournment.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.